It is 7:30, so if we would like to get started on the work session. I guess this is our December 8th work session. We have switched orders, so we're going to have the airport update first, and I'll turn it over to the manager if you'd like to add anything else.
No, come on up, Brian. We appreciate you spending some time with us this morning. We know this is a great success story, so looking forward to hearing more about it.
All right. Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to present. I'm Brian Mulcahy from the Des Moines Airport Authority. I'm the CEO of the Authority. Brian Belt is with me also. He's our Director, Chief Development Officer. So he's handled a lot of the, well, all of the planning and for many number of years here. We've been working on enabling projects back to probably 2014 to get this put together. So just first slide here, our board, which is obviously appointed by this council. Ross, Jessica, and Jake are with us here today. Our officer positions rotate every two years, so as of now, all the board members have been in an officer position at one point. These are the five priorities that we've set for the Authority staff. You know, safety is obviously important in airports. That's for our employees and passengers. Security is both physical and cyber. Those are our key focuses there. The business excellence is a priority because we are on our own essentially. We have no backstop. We don't have property taxes. We do get a little bit of funding, obviously, from the federal government and the state, but not enough to run the airport. Then accommodating growth and future proof in the airport are obviously what we're working on now with the new terminal. So just a few facts here on the Authority. The part-time staff we have is for some specific security requirements we have with the TSA. So just about 10 actual TSOs at the airport do part-time work for us as well. Obviously, we have an agreement with the city for Des Moines PD support, and then we contract a number of functions at the airport as well. The revenue at the airport is basically thirds between parking, the airlines, and then all the other tenant and commission, tenant concessions that we earn. So parking is a significant piece for us, and the future advent of robo taxis and things like that are really kind of a concern because that could seriously impact quite a bit of our revenue. Parking is a third of our revenue, so if robo taxis, autonomous vehicles really take off in the next, you know, 10, 10 years or so, that's got the potential to really impact our revenue, obviously. Our cash position over time, since we became an authority, at the time we became the authority in 2011, we had about $20 million in reserves. That moved to about $100 million in 2024 before we started construction. So there was good progress there. Now, obviously, that allowed us to spend the money we're spending now. It's helping with the terminal. Obviously, we have a loan with the county for the terminal building. That's going to result in about $24 million of debt service a year for us going forward. This slide is just one I wanted to show because, you know, if you remember back in 2010 timeframe, people were always checking Omaha's rates or fares. A lot of people were driving to Omaha or Kansas City. You know, the average fares, you know, there was a $100 difference typically between Des Moines and other places. You know, in about 2012, we got Southwest. That started to compress things a little bit. Then, you know, you look at 2017 or so, we're at about $25 difference. So that competition, even though Southwest did not come in with a lot of flights, that competition was enough to start to compress fares. Get out to the current situation, Des Moines is actually typically running at or below the national average and below Kansas City and Omaha now. A lot of that's got to do with Allegiant, I think, with the low-cost fares that they have, the direct flights. Obviously, these are averages, so any given flight may be different, but at least we're much more competitive now, I think, than we were in the past, and people are not driving out of town. We do see, we see licensed plates from all over the place, you know, and there's enough direct flights, I think, now out of Des Moines that people will sometimes come here for, you know, from the eastern side of the state as well.
Do we have more direct flights out of our airport than Omaha? Did I hear that correct?
We both have about 35 non-stop flights now. Those are, these include seasonal.
Right.
So, you know, we, I don't know, I haven't looked at Omaha's flights that closely to see how many year-round flights they have versus seasonal.
Gotcha.
We've got more Allegiant traffic than they've got, so chances are we have more seasonal. These are our routes. I think we've got a pretty good route map right now for the size of airport we are. We're lucky to be kind of in the middle of the country, so we get direct flights going both directions. We get a lot of the hubs that we might otherwise not have because certain airlines, like American Airlines, or I mean, United Airlines won't, they typically don't overfly their hubs. So if you're on the East Coast, you're only going to get like maybe Chicago and Houston coming west. So either way, I think if we can get a few more flights up in the Northwest, that'd be a good way to kind of fill out this route map a little more. So just run through some slides here on our new garage project. You've probably all been out there by now, but we opened this in July. Some really, it's real positive for us. I think the signage is good. It helps get people into where they're going. I wanted to highlight this because this easy pickup is really a key for us going into the new terminal for the first year 2027, and Brian's going to talk through some phasing here, but the first year is going to be tight at the front curb of the new terminal because we have more work to do, obviously, on the roadway. So this easy pickup was put in place to try to get people off the front curb. You know, if we can get the people, passengers being picked up in the garage, you know, that helps eliminate some of that congestion on the front curb, and we'll try to kind of keep the front curb for drop-offs primarily. We did also add the rideshare folks in here, so it's almost kind of like your Court Avenue change that you made a while ago to pick up in one spot. We've moved them in here to try to drive the traffic, the foot traffic, in here and get those cars off the curb.
Brian, I think you're underselling easy pickup. You said the signage is good. It's awesome.
Okay, thank you.
It is terrific.
We, we hope that people start to use it. It's getting some, some adoption, but I think the longer it's there, hopefully, more people will get there. And we've got a year before the terminal opens, so hopefully we can get more people using it. This is a slide on the new rental car facility. There is a, the slide says it's going to open in January. That was the date we were shooting for, but we were not able to get some of the tenant, some of the tenants are doing their own improvements, and one of them was significantly behind, so we weren't able to get the, the blacktop down before the plants closed, so it'll open probably closer to May or June. But this will be a facility on the south side. All rental car passengers or all rental car customers will be shuttled to the south to pick up their car, and then they'll return at this facility. And this is the rendering of the facility from Army Post Road looking north. And this will help just because we're really kind of running out of room in the terminal area for all the rental cars. The more we grow, the more they grow, so the more room they need for cars. It just made sense at this point to get them moved to the south so that they have more room to grow in the future.
Beeline, take them to the rental, or will they?
They're going to be, they're going to be separate shuttles. Initially, we may choose in the future to run combined shuttles at like late at night if we find that's more efficient, but all the shuttles will be managed by the airport. So we will have the opportunity to combine them in the future if we find it's more efficient. But initially, the rental car shuttles will be separate. This slide is just a shot on our new de-icing pad. This went in this year, actually, it opened this year in October. Last year, we started a de-icing consortium. So it used to be that the airlines all de-ice their own aircraft. Now we have a consortium that does this. They have 10 new de-icing trucks, a huge improvement over the, over the equipment that the airlines used to have, and it just allows for the airlines to get through here much quicker in the morning. Hopefully, you know, they, they used to have challenges with their own equipment. A lot of times, one truck, de-icing, going around a truck, or I mean, around an aircraft. Now they'll have trucks that can de-ice both sides of an aircraft as it pulls into the de-ice pad, so much more efficient. Also, for us, we used to collect 40 acres worth of glycol contaminated water, so essentially collecting until June till all the subdrains got cleaned out. Now we'll be collecting only 10 acres, and hopefully that glycol is a little more concentrated, so we've got the opportunity to recycle it versus sending it to the waste treatment plant. I'm going to have Brian come up now and talk through some phasing of, of the terminal over the next few years.
Morning, everyone. Thanks for having us. Before I kind of dive into some of the phasing diagrams, I want to thank you and all your staff from planning to permitting to onsite inspections. Couldn't have happened without them, so I really appreciate them working with us. Every department's been great, so if you express that, if you run into them, I would greatly appreciate it. Here on the slide is kind of some projects that we've been tackling, really the first heavy, I'd say, really, really heavy year for the terminal. Item two there on the screen in purple, again, of course, that's our Phase 1A, five gates, new terminal. Just to the right of that, you see this skinny purple sliver? That's what we're calling 1B West. That is out of the ground now and fully enclosed, so that's another additional two gates that we hoping to be complete at the end of 2006 as well, so in time for 1A. Just above there, you can see a lot of demolition that occurred in that keynote three, so a lot of pavement removals of some existing aprons, and then we had a lot of fill. I'm assuming you guys seen a lot of trucks going down floor. We almost had 22,000 trucks haul in dirt this summer, so appreciate the public being patient with us. But to accomplish both the apron and the future 1B East, we hauled in about 220,000 cubic yards of dirt. So a lot of activities going on over a wet summer. And then you can kind of see there on that keynote 13, we did shift the service road that will come into the loading dock of the new terminal. So when you're driving along floor, you guys see a gravel road today. Next summer, we'll be paving that. Please stop me at any time if you guys have questions or anything. Then as we kick off 2006 here, again, item one is Phase 1A. Item 14, the keynote there, is 1B East, so that's an additional 14 gates that the Authority Board approved to proceed here back in September. So again, our goal here is you'll still start footings, and you'll start seeing that come out of the ground here in midsummer of 2006, kind of with an opening date in 2008 is our goal. Otherwise, the big, item number two up there on the screen is our big apron associated with the new terminal. The surcharge is sitting there all winter, so hopefully we're going to kick that off here at the end of March, start tripping that surcharge off and doing utilities and paving. 2007, it's going to be a very busy year for the airport and staff. I'm hoping there's time to breathe during this year, but a lot of interaction, both with contractors as well as the public. In 2007, there in items two and 10 keynotes, we're going to actually have two aprons going on at the same time, so that's some interesting phasing that will occur in a very small footprint. In 2007, also is when the existing terminal will start demolition. And then once that terminal is out of the way, keynotes five down there, so three is the demolition, and then five is the roadway finish that will come around, kind of form a half arc and fully complete our roadway. That's kind of what Brian was indicating there. We'll have about half of the front curb for pickups and drop-off there in 2007, where we try to finish the road in one construction season. So a lot of conversation going on behind the scenes right now, trying to tackle a lot of enabling jobs that we can shorten that duration for the demo to make sure that we can tackle at least two lanes all the way through. And then 11 there again is 1B East. That'll be way fully enclosed again, hopefully getting ready to open here in 2008, so our big focus there is getting 1B East. We get two gates out of that with an associated apron there in item one.
And that, that's not built yet, one, right? You're adding that on to the existing, closer to floor, right?
That is correct. So what you see there from floor is just the building pad itself, the fill. We start hopscotch and all the surcharge from the apron that we just did this year, and that surcharge keeps getting pushed down. So we worked out a pretty good plan with the FAA, made some efficiencies in funding and durations. So every year, we'll surcharge the next apron, and we take that surcharge for the next apron the following year. We were able to eliminate retaining walls, so four to one grade from the edge of 1B East End down to the new service road, and then a four to one from the service road down to the sidewalk along floor.
So I had an email exchange with Brian last week just to get an idea, because I'd been at a Southwestern Hills neighborhood meeting, and they ask about, what's the story with all that dirt? And so he said 20,800 truckloads of dirt, and so I did a calculation. If that was a convoy, that would stretch from Omaha to the truck stop USA at Wilton, so 275 miles if that was a convoy, just to get your head around, like, how much dirt is that?
Yeah. It is a lot. If you think about it, we averaged almost 550 trucks a day from McKinley back to 42nd Street, and then you had to do a round trip. So appreciate the public being, you know, very gracious with us. That's a lot of interaction with public, so it's a lot of activity on that.
What, I'm just curious. Where the heck did all the dirt come from? I know that some of it was from the new stormwater retention basin off of East 7th that they're building that.
Yeah. You're correct. So when we did the big apron project, or if I go back here, you'll see, so that item nine there in blue, it's a little rectangle box. Actually, we had a 4 million gallon tank underground that collected our glycol previously. That was filled with material from downtown here, so Riley Construction worked out an agreement for a lot of, it was a sand aggregate, so actually, it's very nice when you place it, it's very compacted when you place it. So a lot of trucks came from downtown. I don't have there on the screen, but our borrow pit is on 42nd Army Post. There's actually a hill there that we can, we're trying to level up for future development, so associated with our runway five end.
Used to be a hill?
No longer, yes. It's gone down significantly. So we got about another 120,000 cubic yards to pull out of there between now and '29. So still a lot of activity on Army Post and floor. So again, the opening of 1B East is kind of a phased approach with funding of the aprons through the FAA. There's only so much money being allocated or can be allocated, so we kind of broke those aprons up into, I'd say, segments that we could fund through them and develop. So, so of course, there, a keynote one there will be opened in, will be actually poured in 2008. 1B East opens later in 2008, and then the apron keynote three there will be placed in 2009, so to get the obvious, the last two gates out of 1B East. So kind of a phased approach just due to a funding restrictions to kind of get us to the end goal. Then in 2030, hoping staff can take a break, take a break. So it's been a crazy, like Brian indicated, it started back in 14, so it's been a heavy lift, so, and I'm pretty sure city staff would like to break as well from us. Thank you.
These next few slides here, I'll just kind of breeze through just renderings of the terminal building. It's actually starting to look like this if you drive out there, so it's kind of nice to see things coming together. This is the inside, the ticket counter. You can see a couple of the art placements that will be put in by the Great Des Moines Art Foundation. This is just the meter greeter space that we'll have in the new terminal. It's kind of unique because you'll, you'll actually be able to see from the non-secure side, you'll be able to see all the way through to the airfield, which is kind of unique in airports today. And then this is the full-service restaurant on the secure side, and we will be keeping our concessions, it's like keeping it local. We'll be continuing to, we own the restaurants, the airport owns the restaurants, so we won't have chains. We plan to try to incorporate as much local as we can, kind of like our current full-service restaurant is all Iowa brewed beers right now, so it's, it's, you know, we'll try to do the same with, with all the food. And one of our, one of our new quick serve restaurants is going to be called Iowa Eats, and we're really looking for local vendors to source that. This slide, I know it's a little tough to read, but just an idea of all the different grants that we have on this project. It's pretty significant. I mean, we typically run, you know, maybe two or three federal grants a year. Right now, we've got, you know, over 20 that are open at any given time, and, and, you know, we couldn't do this obviously without all these grants, but this includes a lot, a lot of state grants as well, plus the community funding that we, we were able to raise ahead of the project. So all in all, you know, the $212 million of grants and then the county loan amount to the total price here to get the building built. And then I know you guys frequently probably get questions in the coffee shops, you know, what's going on at the airport. So just three points here for you. We did open up runway 523 here about a month ago. It will close again in the spring for the, for the construction of the aprons that we're working on, but, you know, there's a potential for noise complaints. When 523 opens back up, we get aircraft flying kind of over downtown again. They don't fly that way all summer while it's closed, then when they start again in the, in the winter, that's when the, the noise complaints tend to pick up a little bit for a little while. I talked about the de-icing pad. It's really a much more sustainable approach for us, and hopefully that'll be a good thing long-term for us. And then we are projecting January of '27 for the new terminal to open. We get the building, substantial completion of the terminal is sometime August, September. We actually are responsible for the building starting in about November, but we will, we'll do several months worth of operational readiness and testing to make sure all the systems are working, that the airlines are able to function and operate. We'll get some TSA lanes moved over probably in early January preparation, and we'll be doing some public events out there to welcome the public and let them walk through. We'll also do some simulations where we bring in, you know, our highest capacity, our peak hour is like about probably 600, 700 passengers, so we will bring in 700 or 800 passengers and try to run through a simulation to just make sure everything's working before we actually transition because we'll be operating in the old terminal one night and open up the next morning in the, in the new terminal. So it'll be a quick switch when it happens.
What does that stand?
In vicinity of, sorry.
Pardon me?
In vicinity of, sorry.
Okay.
And Brian, there currently, how many gates?
We have 13 gates right now, and those 13 gates will, will continue to function. We'll open up the additional six in January of '27. As we add gates towards the 11 new gates, as we add gates, some of those old gates may, may close. We, we know we're going to move at least, our plan right now is to move two of the boarding bridges on the old gates to the new terminal because those boarding bridges are in good shape, and they're a million dollars apiece. But ultimately, we, we think we'll, we'll stay in that 19 to 21 gate range for a while here going forward.
Brian, if you would, talk a little bit about the customer experience for those who travel a lot. What, what are we adding that we don't have today?
Well, I'd say initially, you know, our first goal is to keep it easy. That's one thing we heard throughout design was people want to keep the Des Moines Airport easy to get in and out of, so that, that is a goal. I think we're adding, we're getting rid of some of the pinch points that we currently have. Our current ticket lobby, you know, it gets, if one airline gets backed up at their counter, it, it just is very congested, so try to fix that. Our, our security checkpoint, you know, we, we get to points that sometimes where we have to hold people below the escalator because the queue fills up, and then it gets dangerous when there's nowhere to go when you get to the top of the escalator. So that's another pinch point. And then finally, I would say our, our restrooms have been a pinch point as well. Hopefully, we have more capacity in the restrooms and just a better experience for people. Our food and beverage facilities are, are not good right now. You know, our kitchen is, is, if you've been in our kitchen, if you saw our kitchen, you'd probably be surprised that they can serve the number of people they serve. So all those amenities that, that, you know, just make it a nicer place for people to be will be much improved. As far as passenger options, travel-wise, you know, I can't guarantee anything. I do think we'll have a lot more opportunity for airlines to give us more flights or additional frequencies just because we'll have more space for aircraft. Right now, we, we park anywhere from probably 19 to 23 aircraft a night at the airport, and that, that eats up all the parking that we have without, without sending a lot of aircraft to the cargo apron because that, that's just a long toe, and that, that's not what the airlines want to do. But when we get all the gates open, you know, that's just, that, that many more aircraft that can sit on a gate overnight, and that's, that's really what the airlines want, is to be on a gate overnight. So hopefully, that'll lead to more, more options.
Yeah, you're thinking about the big operational things which are critical to make the project a success. I remember Denver, we all do, when it opened and the problems they had with baggage.
Yeah.
I'm thinking about little things like pet relief.
Okay.
Bottle filling stations. I was an SFO last week, and I was impressed with center, not on the walls, not on drinking fountains, but they had little water bottle filling stations with counters where you can put your bag, take your bottle out. I think about a parking garage, and I'm assuming that the structure we have per the number of flights that go out is pretty good size. I think we're giving our passengers a big choice to park in a garage. It's also going to be a long hike from the furthest point of, in the garage into the terminal. And did, did you mention to me one time that there's going to be a skywalk level where people can get out of the weather who are parking in the garage and?
Well, I wouldn't say it's going to be, it's not an enclosed skywalk, but there will be a walkway. We've already put in the walkway in the, on the second floor of the garage. If we enclosed it, then that's, that brings a lot of other issues with, with code, but it is a protected walkway through the second floor. Back to the, the pet relief, we are going to have a pet relief room in the, in the new terminal, inside the, the secure area. It's one thing we haven't been able to put in our, our current terminal because we had no place to put it. So we are, we are trying to capture all those nice things to do that we haven't been able to do with the current terminal.
We're under good leadership. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
To my question, if you compared the old number of parking stalls to the new, even counting the expanded rental, because that opens up spaces, do you know what that number is? Like, how many were?
In the, in the parking garage, we went from, was it 18 to 2900? So I want to say we were up to 2900 in the, in the parking garage. That's without the rental car spaces that we currently have that will be coming back to us when they move.
So well over 50% increase?
It was, it was, I think, 60 some percent.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, I think days like this, it's, it's, we're going to see it fill, but for the most part, I think we'll, we'll have the capacity we need with the parking ramp.
And the, the lighting system where you have a green light and a red light that sure makes it easier to find an open spot.
Yeah, that's, that's been a huge change for us because, beneficial change, because that allows us to really get more cars in there, you know. If it's, if you didn't, if we didn't have that, you know, you get to 90% full, and it's tough to find a spot. Now you can get closer to 98, 99% full, so it makes a big difference.
And it seems like we, we don't have as many handicap spots as I would like to see.
Uh, we, we do have quite a few, and we've, we've, I mean, obviously, we meet the code with, with the spots we have, and the new terminal or the new parking garage, they're mostly by the new stair tower, which obviously most people aren't using yet because that goes into, will go into the new terminal. But with, with the existing spots, we do have handicap spots right up. As, just, if you think about just across the, the sidewalk from the Delta counters, as you come into the parking garage there, we've got a number of handicap spots there, and then we've got handicap spots on every And then we've got handicap spots on every, every level of the parking garage, very close to the stair towers and the elevators. Appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you, Brian, and thank all the board members for your service. So exciting times for Des Moines. So thanks a lot. So next, next item on our work session.
So our second item started out as a, a quick hit introduction with our new HSA group, Housing Solutions Alliance. But I think we're going to add to that because we have an opportunity to talk holistically at the same time with some of our staff initiatives and partnering that's going on with homelessness generally. So I'll introduce or have our speakers come up and let them go from there.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Scott Jean, a president and CEO at EMC Insurance, but also serve as the co-chair of the Housing Solutions Alliance. Now I think, well, first of all, thank you all for your support and everything going on with the HSA and all that you're doing as a council to address homelessness in, in the city of Des Moines. I know it's been a difficult road and I appreciate all the work that you guys have put in to get us to where we're at today. But I think all of you are aware that a couple of years ago, we started a process of putting together a blueprint. We brought a team together to address it, brought in a consultant from Ohio with some expertise and we ended up completing the blueprint last year. And so now what we are in the process of doing is creating a new organization to address and to implement the blueprint. So prior to where we're at today, we had the, I think, what was it called? The Homelessness Coordination Council. That has now been modified and changed into the Housing Solutions Alliance and we are charged with implementing the, the blueprint. So I'm, I'm joined here with Doug Romig, who was hired as our executive director, and he's going to give you an update on the progress that we've been making so far. But before we jump into that, wanted to just mention the importance of how we put together our board of directors. We wanted to make sure it was a, a true public-private partnership where we have a, a number of public servants who are, you know, in many cases business leaders, but also they're, they're representing their cities and their communities. But we also wanted to make sure we had good representation from the business community, also working together. So first of all, we have our executive committee, what you see up here, which includes Chris Coleman and myself. Chris is our, my co-chair. He's been very involved with the HEC before and obviously has been serving on the council and very familiar with what's happening in the space. Susan Judkins, Kristi Noss from the Community Foundation, Matt McCoy from the Pope County Board Supervisors, and Mary Sellers from United Way. So that's our executive council. But we also have many other board members that are serving with us and I won't read through all the names of the list, but what you see here is a pretty good mix of public and private representatives. So we've got a number of the communities represented and a number of the key businesses that we wanted to be on board. One thing when I first joined the committee that was putting together the blueprint, I felt like we, there were, there were quite a few people that were from nonprofits and that didn't necessarily have a, the business perspective on things. So as we put this board together, we wanted to make sure we had that representation of both the, the public and the private. And we've had a, a number of great board meetings and it's, it's been great to see the level of collaboration that we have, but also the ideas that are bringing, being brought forth, having those multiple ideas represented. So with that, I want to turn things over to our executive director, Doug Romig, who I think many of you are familiar with. It was wonderful to have him back in the city. So I'm going to turn it over to him to give you an update to where we're at.
Thanks, Scott. I appreciate that. Anthony, it's, it's good back, good to be back. So, uh, so the blueprint to address homelessness has seven focus areas that are listed here. Reduce the inflow into the system. Improve our crisis response capacity. Reduce and end unsheltered homelessness. Accelerate exits from homelessness to stable housing. Strengthen our connections to the adjacent systems, whether it's healthcare, prisons, people that are transitioning out of different areas, youth exiting foster care, those types of things. So we can build those relationships, those connections to provide opportunities and then actively manage the system. So the blueprint, the way I've broken it out into is we've got some areas where there are funding needs like prevention diversion, acquiring buildings, supporting new units, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, those types of things. Then there's processes and procedures that we can improve internally within the system. And then there's system-wide changes that need to occur that impact a lot of the different players. So I've sort of tried to break it down into that way into functional units. And then ultimately we need to expand affordable housing and that's across the spectrum. Every community is facing a housing crisis as you have people that are at 30% area of immediate income looking for units, but those are being taken by people that are at 50% because the people that are at 50%, those units that are can afford are being taken up by the people that are 70 or 80%. So it's just a compounding impact that cascades through the system. And then building the framework. So the, as Scott mentioned, we've got an incredible board of directors and we're in the process right now. We have a board meeting later today and we'll be adopting, hopefully adopting our, our bylaws, adopting our budget and adopting the process that we're going to utilize to vet and approve each of the 25 improvement strategies that are within the blueprint. The other piece then that we're at is we're working on all of them and as Chief Manager Sanders mentioned, the city staff's going to presenting sort of where they're at on one of their efforts that they're leading. So within the 25 strategies, there are lead agencies and my role is to help facilitate each of those lead agencies to pull this plan together and to make it work as a cohesive whole. So we're working on all the, the strategies and they're at various different stages, but we've elevated our efforts in looking at prevention and diversion. We believe that if we can address what's coming into the system and reduce that, we might be able to then save money on the backend by having, by providing fewer units because we're reducing the inflow. So those are the things that are happening. We're hoping to have our, our prevention diversion process presented to the board for their final recommendation in Q1 of 2026. We're also focusing on the backend of permanent supportive housing units or how permanent housing with supports. So we've got a group coming together, about 22 different representatives from service providers to developers to property managers to vet through what the issues are and how can we make that system better and how many units do we need to secure and the best way to secure those. With that, I'm sure Scott or I will be available to answer any questions. I've been here about, been back about eight weeks now, so.
So how are you measuring the prevention and diversion pieces? And how will you measure success? So how are we going to track what those investments look like and then if those investments are actually successful? I mean, because from what it sounds like, the theory is, is that the goal is to make that successful, so you need fewer units at the tail end.
Right. And that is a great question. Part of that is what we're working through with our strategies and it's hard to track a negative because if we're keeping people out of the system, we're not sure how, you know, what that impact is. So the bigger, the, the bigger area on the diversion side and one of the, one of the reference points for success is if somebody's in the system and we get them out of the system, we can track whether they return to the system and that's, so that will be one of the measuring tools. So let's say Doug Romig gets assistance. I got evicted from my apartment. I'm back into the, I'm back stable. They will pull my name in year one, year three and year five. And if I don't show up as returning to the system, we would consider that a success, that I did not re-engage into the system. We'll also be looking at, especially with the permanent supportive housing side, tracking progress. So when I was housing director for the city of Des Moines, we had what was called family self-sufficiency. And if you think about those types of services where there's supports, we had the, the one person I remember the most is we had a young lady that was 18 years old, single mom, had no family support, went through our program and at the end of seven years, she took all the home management maintenance courses from Home Inc., ended up getting a, a degree from Grandview College, Magnum cum laude. And when she finished the family self-sufficiency program, she had $40,000 in equity. She bought her house. So she was multiple generations of services in the system. So not only did she break that, that for her, for her and then future generations, her kids, their kids, the return on the investment of what she paid in income taxes at age 21 to, or 24 until when she was retired was a significant return on investment. So I, I understand what you're saying. It's all those, and I'm sort of talking around it a little bit, I know, because we don't have all those things in place and identified. Like I said, it's hard to track a negative. So that is something that we'll be working with, with our board and that's why I like the diversity. We've got elected officials. We have foundation leads from a lot of the private corporations and they have certain measurements that they want to see. And we're also looking at best practices across the country. So Columbus, Ohio is one. The Portland, Oregon has a fairly good program and there's others throughout. So we will look to see how we can best track progress and success. And the other thing that our boards talked about is starting small, vetting a system, implementing it on a lower scale. If it's successful, then ramping it up instead of throwing a bunch of money at it, hoping it works. Do a beta set.
To Josh's question, can you just generally talk about the seven strategies and the work that's being done with each of them having a assigned strategy lead?
Yeah. So again, so reduce inflow would be prevention diversion, uh, uh, critical care of somebody that's currently in, going into shelter, trying to get them exited out immediately and not staying in shelter, unhealth, un, unsheltered areas. The improvement crisis response capacity has several different areas of transitional housing, permanent supportive housing. So again, it's getting people from shelter out to shelter. And each of these, as I indicated, there are seven strategies. Within these seven strategies, there's 25 improvement, seven focus areas, 25 improvement strategies. Each of them has a lead that is one of the organizations. The city of Des Moines has some, the county, a lot of the different nonprofits. So we're working collectively and together to move these things forward. So the...
Item one would be the prevention and diversion or their components or strategies of prevention and diversion in, in these other items as well?
There are, in some of the areas, there are some other, other provisions and strategies like the, I'm trying to, to recall, I don't have my book in front of me and I'm still learning the entire blueprint.
Like, like one has a strategy underneath it, which is the reduce system outflow, which is homeless prevention assistance. And that strategy lead is Home Inc. And then the organizations that are assigned to that kind of round table are listed. So it's Homeward, City of Des Moines, Pope County, Nationwide, Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, and the homeless providers themselves. So that's like one element of it, which is, you know, which is the, which is preventative assistance on the inflow side.
What is the name of that document?
Uh, I gave you the executive summary. This is the whole thing. And I'd love to get you each a hard copy. I think maybe early on, people might've gotten a hard copy, but it is, I mean, not to speak for Doug or, or Scott, but I do think it's one of the finer written plans from a consultant perspective because everything has an assigned person to it or an assigned agency. And in a minute, Des Moines has two of them assigned to us to be the lead and Amber and Lisa are going to speak about those to give us an update on the pieces of the plan that we're responsible for pulling people together.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get you each one. You can have that one.
Well, one of the things, and maybe I'm not going to be able to, to get this here, but particularly since there's a focus on the prevention and diversion, I mean, it'd be helpful for me to understand where in the strategy those pieces are of, of the 25 and how many pieces that, that touches. Or is this, the focus is, is kind of, is it clear it's in step one, right? Or item one, strategy one?
Right.
And maybe that's just the initial focus is on strategy one?
Um, no. So the strategies, we're, we're going to, it's a combination. So prevention diversion is actually strategic improvement, 1A and 2D, which is the flex fund, if you look at the overall plan. And then it does touch some of the other areas and then the...
The flex fund is what we... Flex fund is what we've talked about occasionally here where it's, I think they, they set a goal for, was it 150 or was that what we're maybe providing?
Yes.
2D is what he said. And the flex fund, I mean, that, that's a good question too in terms of matrix. I mean, we should be able to track if we're putting dollars in the flex fund, like every single person that sees, receives something, you might even be able to break it down by strategy, right?
Correct.
Like we're providing an, you know, security deposit, extra month rent, like how we're using the flex fund and which pieces lead to a result, right?
Yes, exactly. And there's a study, so Dr. Nala Johnson with the Mid-Iowa Health Department is looking at how some of these preventative services, length of time services provided to what that output is. So that will help as well as we look through this. So that's one of the key pieces also within the blueprint is to have those outcome measurements. And that's critical to the board as well as how do we measure success? And some of those, we worked, as we're working through the plan, we're working through that. So for prevention and diversion right now, we're doing all the data research. What are we currently, where's the current funding? How much is it? Who's providing it and what services are, are being provided for and how are we measuring success today? Then what changes need to be made to this system access? So for example, one of the issues that we have, our, our most vulnerable people have is running, so if they're looking for rent assistance, they're going to three to four locations because they can't get $800 in one location. So for somebody that is, you know, mobily challenged, having to go across the community to three different areas to try to find 200, $250 to make 800 bucks, that's a system issue that we can try to address to where it's, we can make that a one-stop shop and make it easier for that individual to get what they need to move their life forward.
Doug, can you tell us how the other suburban communities are participating and what they're contributing?
Well, right now we haven't had any major asks of funding or anything, so they're at the table. Clive, council member Susan Junkins has been a very active participant and we have other representatives that are on the board that, you know, either attend virtually or in person. I actually have a meeting later this week with Matt McKillen, Matt McQuillan, city manager at Clive and Susan Junkins, to have a one-on-one with them. So I, I would say there's interest and there's, that's one of the things that drew me to this particular effort is having been in Des Moines and Pope County and worked for the city and the county. If there's one community that can implement this blueprint, it is this community. The ability for us to work together is, is incredibly, has been incredibly successful over the years on different initiatives that we have, we have done. So I anticipate and fully believe the suburban communities will be a part of this. It's, this touches their communities as well, but we're not, like I said, I've been here about eight weeks, so, and I wasn't part of the development of the blueprint. So I'm still learning the blueprint. I'm still trying to memorize and understand the gap analysis. And right now I'm focusing on creating a system and a process so that we can vet every strategy and bring it forward in a concise, clear manner with clear outcome measurements. So it's a little slow. measurements. So it's a little slower on the front end of creating the system. And then once the system's in place, and then we can go through the strategies and start moving them through that process.
I think we can all agree that this is not just a Des Moines problem.
Correct.
I think that this is, the blueprint was organized so that it's a more of a metro concept. And it lays out the plan to create more involvement from all parties in a more cohesive, organized manner, wouldn't you say?
Even to the point that we tried to be strategic about corporate leaders in many jurisdictions around the area, so that we have a voice in, inside every corner of the, of the metro, you know, to help us make the case that this is not a geographic or a jurisdictional issue.
I think now would be a good time to also thank Scott again for his involvement. But part of what we needed HSA to do is have the hard conversations about how we come together as the public resources and the private resources to, to hold each other accountable. Because at its onset, this is not inherently a city government issue. This is a community issue, right? This is bordering on responsibilities of other levels of government, right? So the hard conversations, which Des Moines could never do on their own, is being able to sit across the table and say, we need, we need the county to do this. We need to go after the state assistance for this. We have private money for this piece. And help break that out. And that's why it hasn't already been solved. Because really, looking backwards, it was the city and the county with a couple nonprofits and an occasional private. And so if, if there was an opportunity to, to challenge the HSA, I would give you that challenge. Would, help us break the problem down in participants at different levels of government. What is the expectation, so that we can then hold each other as, as peers accountable? Because it's hard for me as a city manager to, to hold other city managers accountable when we haven't broken down the problem. And so, Doug, thank you for taking this on as a staff person, because again, it is very broad, incredibly broad. And we're going to need the analytical skills that I know you bring to the table to help us work through those hard conversations about who's going to take on which tasks and, and help contribute to that. So thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
And thank you, Scott, for your leadership. And thank you, Chris, for your work.
So Mayor, more specifically, as was mentioned, there's a couple tasks that, that we are to lead. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa and Amber. I don't want to steal their thunder, because they're making progress in these areas as well.
Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Lisa Krabs here with the Federal Funds Division of Neighborhood Services, also presenting with Amber Lewis. So she'll come up in a second. Just want to state, first of all, there is a lot going on regarding homelessness and all the initiatives that are going on with, to address that. So this, today's presentation is just a very quick, updated and focused, focused update, excuse me, on the items that link directly back to the HSA plan. So again, there's a lot going on, but we're really highlighting just a few things. So. First of all, we want to connect it to this initiative that we've been working on for over a year and a half, the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative. With that, again, it's been a year and a half of a lot of staff time, at least five hours a week of different people, approximately 10, working in a group, to address the mission of where we will work in partnership to ensure our community is safe, healthy, and thriving, so that by 2030, no one must experience unsheltered homelessness. And that mission came from this four-phase methodology that we have been learning and applying through the Bloomberg Harvard Initiative. And with that, there's these different phases. Like I said, we also did research where we went out and interviewed unsheltered persons, and we interviewed service providers as well to kind of get some background and information. We read reports and studies directly related to the unsheltered homelessness in Des Moines. And then now we're in our third phase, which is the activation phase. And so what we are doing here is, again, a year and a half process, condensing to one slide. But through this process, we, we found approximately 200 different ideas from different groups and service providers, and synthesized it into eight ideas. So what you'll see is the link to the portfolio and the HSA plan is, is where we're getting to. And there's a fourth phase, which is the sustain, and that is definitely something we're going to be working through. But. So with the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative and the portfolio, I'm taking a trail, we're getting there. There were two main ideas that were plucked out. So the city of Des Moines was invited back to do a little bit more with Bloomberg Harvard after that process ended, and it's called the Implementation Accelerator. So with these two ideas, we have the quick win and the big bet that we plucked out of our portfolio. And the first one is the quick win, again, just highlighting it very, very briefly. The quick win, we're working, one group, one subgroup of the Bloomberg Initiative is looking into lockers. They're, they're going to buy a handful of lockers with the, the funding, with a grant from the Bloomberg Group. And that is for unsheltered individuals to put their, their personal belongings. We had a lot of feedback that there was an extensive loss of, loss and theft of personal items, identification, medication, cell phones. So I'm going to pilot that project here soon, and hopefully we'll have more updates on that. But the big bet, this is where the thread continues and links to the HSA. The big bet is we're trying to implement a non-congregate shelter for 50 individuals. So Amber will talk a little bit more about that, how that links to the HSA. But again, we've been doing a lot of work. We already had an input session with some providers. Amber will touch on that a little bit more in detail. And hopefully here in the next couple months, we'll have a better plan laid out on how we're going to achieve a non-congregate shelter. So I'll hand it off to Amber for now.
Good morning, Mayor Bozen, I'm just City Council. Amber Lewis, homelessness policy administrator for the city. And continuing where Lisa left off, so, and really tying it into what Doug shared. So we are, as a city, the strategy, or the focus area lead, strategy lead, I'm sorry, for focus area two. So if you'll recall, Doug listed seven different focus areas for that blueprint to address homelessness. And so the city specifically, we are signed up for two, as Councilmember Coleman noted. One of those is specific to the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency. And so the other one that the city is working on is this crisis response capacity, and specifically about expanding emergency shelter for single adults by 50 units, but in a very specific type of shelter. So it's that non-congregate shelter idea, where someone has private sleeping space. So there may be other shared amenities in the facility, but there's a private space to, to sleep and, and have your belongings. And so we have been digging into what this might look like in our community. On the slides here, there are three different options that we've really dug into. The first one on the bottom left is from Avivo Village in Minneapolis. That's, you can see they're kind of, it's in a larger kind of warehouse style building. It could be any kind of large building, could be a repurposed school, any kind of large building. You kind of have these, excuse me, these individual pods, sleeping pods. So that is, that's case study. And it's called Avivo Village in Minneapolis. We kind of dug into what that might look like. In the middle here, those, you'll see kind of individual, again, kind of pods, but those are outdoors and a village-style community. That's, lots of different companies make different models. But we've looked into a model by the Palat Shelter Company out of Washington State. And so that's that, that middle one. Again, kind of village-style community outside, you have some shared restroom separate, but you have the kind of sleeping pods that are individually heated and cooled. And then on the, on the bottom right, you have, and this is an old motel. So it's converted into a non-congregate shelter, and everybody has, again, their own sleeping space. And so just kind of dug into, okay, what's going to work best in our community? And let's see. Thank you. Okay. So we did a prototyping session, just, just kind of testing, getting ideas and feedback from the community. We did a prototyping session recently with service providers, had about 20 to 25 service providers. And we've really dug into specific case studies about those three different models. And just, again, gathering feedback. And I can see, did a lot with stickies, some pros and cons, different things, different kind of priorities, feedback, things that are important to people. Some of the themes that, that come up and that we have, have learned before in our research as well, but want to continue to focus on. We need a model that allows pets. A lot of people don't want to separate from their pets, as we've talked about before. We've, we've learned that. And we want to focus and make sure that has supportive services, including for mental and physical health. We want a model that has, that ensures people have food access, that have 24/7 staff and security services on site. And we want, we want to make sure it really honors privacy, autonomy, safety, and then this community focus, right? So people are not isolated, but they really can support one another in a community focus. Those are the themes that emerged from, again, our prototyping with our stakeholders. And then that kind of leads into, Lisa's going to talk a little bit about some of the different federal funding sources that we've looked into that could potentially support non-congregate shelter. We've been digging into, you know, could non-congregate shelter, does it align with transitional housing? And so are there some federal funding sources that would potentially work for non-congregate shelter? So over to Lisa to talk more about that. Yes, absolutely.
We've, we've talked a lot about adults, men and women. But do we know, do we have any idea how many of our homeless community that are out there today have children that they've had to go to grandma, grandpa, or relatives, or how, how many of these folks have actually have children that, that they can't, that they can't be housed with? Any idea?
So let's see. So for families with children, just to go back to the blueprint for a moment, that's, that's another focus of the, the blueprint. We know we need more shelter for families with children. We don't have, we don't tend to have a lot of families with children that are literally outside, unsheltered, because our community has really come around and said, that's, that's not acceptable for children, right? Shouldn't be acceptable for anybody, but at least let's make sure children are not outdoors. And so our community has come around, and Polk County does a huge amount in this area, working with primary healthcare and centralized intake. And so when a family's in that situation, they're going to do everything they can, including maybe short hotel stays when necessary. So Polk County actually has that as one of their focus area kind of leads to, to build that out. Yeah.
And just to touch on that, just a little bit more, Rachel Adams with the county is serving on our committee for the, the non-congregate shelter for individuals. So it is, you know, taking a step back, this whole process, we are trying very, very hard to be conscious and aware of the landscape and not just focus on our one item. So Rachel is serving on our committee just to participate and understand what we're doing, so that it's not like she's necessarily, you know, taking any of our ideas or anything, but we're collaborating and we're working together. So federal grant funding considerations. Just, just putting this out here more as an FYI of what's going on in, in that landscape. You might recall, you know, in 2021, we had the, the funding from the HOME ARP, it's the American Rescue Plan is what that stands for. And that funding really came through as a response to COVID. And so we still have approximately a million dollars left. We have awarded to Starts Right Here, to their project. We also awarded to the Monarch, that was the first one. And we had awarded it to Greater Des Moines Supportive Housing, which then was, you know, taken back when that project did not move forward. So we have been holding on to about a million dollars that we think would work for a non-congregate shelter. And we just need to understand how we're going to expend that by summer of 2026. That's why we've been holding it, to ensure an expenditure deadline of 2030. And that's all in the regulatory framework. But so just putting that there, you know, we've, we've been looking at that. And then the next thing to be aware of is that the Continuum of Care Grant, normally, you know, we receive that every year, approximately six and a half to seven million dollars. And a significant portion of that, 80 to 90%, has been dedicated to permanent housing. There's been a major shift with the administration and priorities and whatnot. And so now that's actually been reduced to 30% of our funding. So 30% of our potential funding that we would receive is now for permanent supportive housing, which means it opens up a lot more for different things. And the focus of this next grant round is transitional housing and supportive services.
It just, can we talk a little bit? I mean, you framed it as it opens it up, but...
Well, opens it up. I, yeah, maybe that's not the right term.
Yeah. I mean, the implications of that funding change is that we, there are a lot of people in permanent supportive housing today that we expect to see lose their housing.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yes, there is, go ahead.
We're not going to let that happen. But the way that their housing is provided is going to have to change.
Right. We are looking, so we're, for, for those who are in permanent supportive housing that are potentially going to lose their housing, we're looking at a few different options. Nothing, nothing has been set in stone, or nothing is concrete yet. But there's, you know, working with Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency, there's a priority set for if you're coming out of permanent supportive housing, to get a voucher. There's one path there. HOME ARP actually can use some tenant-based rental assistance. So we could, you know, do some of that there. So there's definitely this, I would say, urgency and need to understand what we're going to do for people who are going to lose their housing first, yes. But there's also the acknowledgement and the realization that, okay, so we don't want to lose, you know, $5 million plus, just because they're changing programs. And so we're trying to figure out how to adapt and understand the best path for that. So I apologize for using the term open up, because I agree, I don't think that's the right term, but...
It is a, a major upheaval of how the dollars have been allocated. So, and there's a very short timeframe to even get the grant and all the paperwork in. So it's a major upheaval to the system. But we've also got to look at how we can utilize, so we don't lose the dollars that can reprogram it and do the things that meet their criteria, but still use those dollars to help people. And it could be almost more in the prevention part.
Yeah. I wanted to have it finished, but I wanted to follow up to...
I don't really have much more.
I mean, we got to the point where it's the crux of the issue right now, because we have a really short period of time. And if you'd give me just a minute to throw out a whole bunch of stuff, I'll try not to take too long. The HSA and MAC, two organizations that I've been representing you on, have both sent letters to our congressional delegations at minimum, asking for a new timeline. And we still have hopes of that. But while we're advocating for that, we're moving forward, because the deadline for grant applications is Friday. In four days.
Four days.
If, well, whatever, it's five days. And, and we're, we're really conscious of the fact that our guaranteed dollars go to about 30% of what it was before. That's 130%. There's also this 30% that is the cap on which we can spend on permanent supportive housing. Our funds, so they could be reduced, I'm going to use round numbers, from 6 million to 2, 30% of what we had. But we also have a cap of nine that we could apply for. And the higher amount that we get, the 30% of permanent supportive housing goes up, which allows us to control, to, to, to fund those and provide some controls that that, that that program continues at the highest possible level. Even in that scenario, it won't be as high as it was. So like, just, Lisa pointed this out, but every month in our municipal housing agency, about 40 vouchers open up. So over a period of time, we can transition a lot of them. The hard part is going to be those that don't currently qualify, that have been in permanent supportive housing, but because of the housing choice vouchers, have a different threshold for meeting background checks and all that. We're going to have a hard-to-serve population. I want to give a little credit here. For those of you that don't work with Amber and Lisa often, which I've been able to do, they're like part of the unsung heroes that really make Des Moines work. And I want to recognize Scott. Last week, Joe, Connie, and I, Scott, Amber, Lisa, and I think all four of Scott's direct reports met, I think, four of the five days last week, either here or with providers. reports met, I think, four of the five days last week, either here or with providers in the afternoon. We're trying to come up with a plan to make sure that as a safeguard for Friday, we have applications for all these cross-currents that have happened through the changes in federal regulations, in case the timeframe sticks. Again, I'll say, we hope they don't stick so we can be more thoughtful about that. But we don't want to leave money on the table. It means that between now and Friday, there are going to be some organizations that are going to need maybe a commitment from the city, maybe a, a letter of support for some of this million dollars of Home ARP funds. Maybe it is, maybe it's a lease or a shared services agreement. I mention this because I think Joe, Connie and I, who have served on the HSA and, you know, lived the roller coaster of this last couple of weeks, hope that there might be a way for the city to help, which means we might have to have a special meeting later this week. That Scott can't do that unless there's some authorization from us. And we don't want to, we don't want, in a period where it feels like they're playing gotcha, we don't want to open ourselves up by not, you know, dotting every i and crossing every t. So we want to make sure that we have things in place so that we can draw down as much of that, you know, six or nine million dollars as, as we can. Again, round numbers. There, there are really good agencies working on this, but the number one solution to homelessness in our town has been permanent supportive housing, which is going to change a lot. And that's not because decisions any of us are making. We would expand it. Actually, when you get, when, I'll give you all a copy of the blueprint later today, the whole thing, you'll see that it all rests in trying to find more ways to fund permanent supportive housing as the, as the key strategy. That's going to have to change.
And I think it's important, maybe something that, that we have left out, that as we go through these meetings, this administration has put in some type of, kind of odd, I'll just leave it at that, like if your community doesn't participate in camping ordinance, you don't qualify for any additional dollars. You actually will probably get less money. So unfortunately, some of the things that we've done over the last year, that we've taken criticism from, from others, we wouldn't get some of that funding to these providers that we're going to partner with without making those type of hard decisions that we had to make. So I, I think that's important that we point that out, because I don't know if that's common knowledge to everybody.
I think this whole change, you know, about so quickly, a large portion too, is about treatment and having treatment for the people that are in the housing. And that's a huge shift, because first of all, trying to find all the providers to do that. And the amount of time they want them to have it, that's why having these more, what we were showing, whether it be the Pallet Community or the, all those type of settings where you can actually give people the services they need are going to be critical. So I'm glad we were down the path that hopefully now we can support kind of the project of what we were trying to do, or get the funding for the non-congregate...
It's 40 hours a week, correct? Is what they're requiring.
In, in transitional.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, Joe, you underscored an important point about where we've been. The other piece that I don't think that we, you know, her slide about those little, you know, Post-it notes and everything, you'll hear me say this for a long time, I, I can't imagine there's a better mayor in the United States than Mayor Bozen. And she has opened up this opportunity to work with Harvard and Bloomberg, which without that, our, our submission this week probably would not be as credible. So recognize that. This is all kind of founded in what, what has been worked on for non-congregate, you know, for that hard-to-serve population where our current places, you know, Bethel and CIS and, and some of these other congregate sites just don't work for the, for the way in, for the way in which some of our, our vulnerable need to be served.
Help me understand, and I, I think it's great that we're making progress on the non-congregate. I mean, that's been something we've identified for a while, and it's been a tough nut to crack. One of the things that has always been tough about it, I mean, the capital costs are, are kind of the easy, the easy part. I mean, when the Pallet Home folks came and visited, they had, I think, a 1.7 million annual operational cost, right?
Slightly higher.
Slightly higher, slightly higher, sorry. I undersold the operational cost. And that, that, that's been the, that's been the hard part, both finding that funding, which it sounds like maybe this change, we, we've, we can ask for operational dollars for non-congregate, and so we're in, because we're doing that work, maybe we've all of a sudden identified a funding source for that. And then the other part is, we didn't have any nonprofits who wanted to actually operate the thing, right?
We have some now.
Okay, so we're, so those things...
That possibly will help operate it.
So those things are, are possibly being solved.
Well...
We're sure working on it.
It says, one thing about it, it's a short time for it.
I think it hasn't been solved.
I don't, so, I think the way you characterize it is right. And like, we aren't in official session, so we can't, you know, take any action. But I think greenlighting the city manager to help them be optimistic about this, you know, that maybe there could be some city support. And when I say city support, it could be, you know, collaborative work with our staff. It could be land, it could be, it, it could be money, it could be federal funds that we get like through the, through the home funds.
Facilitating collaborative meeting.
Yeah. So, but I, I think, I think if he gets a sense that there's a green light to come back later this week, maybe there are some nonprofits that could help if they saw that there could be significant federal funds available.
And we'll have to wait till later this week to know who those folks are.
I, like, I'll, I'll tell you people I've, I've, I've met with. One is, one is a nonprofit called Freed Up, which is, one of, one of the people involved in that is a name you might know, Andy Bales. Andy is back in Des Moines after 15 years in homeless work on Skid Row. He was one of the leaders of the largest emergency shelter there. He is back in Des Moines. He had run Door of Faith and other outreach services here. He has, he has assembled a team, and I don't, I, I don't have his permission to say that, but I think my sense is, he's, he's happy to be included. He's a national thought leader on this and, and has a partner with some other people that are trying to submit a similar grant application in a couple of communities around the country. And because Andy's here, we're kind of fortunate to be in that list of three where they think there is some possibility to use these funds to help some of the most hard-to-serve people that are chronically homeless, living on our streets, where CIS and other facilities don't work. They, they think they have a model that could work, that's a kind of a carve-out. And there, there are others too, but I think that's a promising one.
Just two questions. So when you say they, this is entirely federal-directed, this is not state, right?
The Continuum of Care Grant funding?
Yeah, but there's no other new...
Oh, additional state regulations or rules? Oh, gosh, not that I'm aware of. This is all, yeah, right, I don't, not that I'm aware of. This is directly from HUD and the HUD rules for this funding round.
And it sounds like this is becoming housing-first, opposed to...
No, they're against that.
Yeah, they're trying to reduce the housing first. So the housing first is the model where someone, the idea is, if someone gets housing first, then they can more easily address...
Work on the other issues.
Treatment and things like that. But they're not required to obtain supportive services, they're not required to participate, participate in a program, it's all voluntary. And so this is a switch. It's, it's saying, no, you need to address whatever is your ailment, yeah, yeah, first.
It's really a flip of the switch. I mean, it's totally flipping it on opposite. And so the state is having, I think, same issues of trying to figure out how, were, and they get money? So they have to do the same kind of, how are they going to be impacted, probably?
Yeah, the state receives the same grants we do, the Continuum of Care Grant, the ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant. So they'll, yeah, like you said, they have also figuring out for the balance of state how they're going to incorporate this.
Abandon housing first, but...
You know, that's a great question. I don't, I don't know if they're abandoning housing first altogether, but it's definitely a difference in priority, how they're approaching it.
Carl, the way, the way I think about it in long-term, the way I think the metro is going to have to think about it, is that the housing first model is about permanent supportive housing that gives a, a lifeline of hope and, and stability to families. And the federal government is cutting off the housing after 24 months and the services after 30 months. So there still is a chance to help people through maybe the most critical pieces of their transition to, to housing for 24 months. But kind of the permanent solution is going to have to more be like the housing choice vows, which are Section 8. We're going to have to, we're going to have to meld those approaches together more than we have in the past.
It's a huge upheaval.
And there will be more. All of these solutions are important.
There's a purpose for each one of these solutions.
Okay, I, I heard a few suggestions, thank you.
Thank you for putting everything together very short notice, so thanks.
And for the next four to five days of continued work, thank you. And Doug's here to help too.
So at the heart of it.
I, I heard about, heard potential need for meeting. Want to get council's reaction. We have you all together for the fire chief interviews Friday morning. And so we could keep you after that for a short time, if that works.
I just didn't know, since the applications are due on Friday, do we need to do maybe something prior to that, for the applications to be entered into, if we have to do some type of...
That's a great question.
Agreement or something? I, I don't know, Friday is...
The actual deadline to apply is yet a week or two after that, is it not?
Oh, I thought it was this Friday.
So the, the way it's set up, there's a local competition and then the federal competition. So the local competition is due this week, and then the federal competition is due January 14th, which is, it all filters into that.
Kind of holds. We, we could try and find a date, I don't know, Thursday or late Wednesday.
We can just do a Zoom. Yeah, we can do Zoom.
But, but excellent. Help me understand, I mean, the difference between the local competition and the federal? I mean, do we need the same level of city involvement? Like, if it's not due till January 14th?
We have to submit.
I mean...
Well, that's a great question.
Do we have to, I, I mean, I guess, is there, what I'm trying to get at, is there an opportunity to vet some of those things more thoroughly? Or do they need sign off before they finish their application in the local competition? I mean, because it, it will feel a little bit rushed.
That's going to be some of it, they're going to need to know that we're, we're committed to...
Right. I, I want us to be nimble, but if there's an opportunity to evaluate a little bit and have a little bit more back and forth, I'd also like to take that as well.
Yeah. Who's doing the local Continuum of Care? Homeward?
Yeah. You know, Homeward is by definition our COC board. They just call themselves something different locally. They, they, once they start this process, they kind of have a restriction from working with, like, these entities of gaming the system, you know, like they're supposed to be the, our independent arbitrator, and, which is one reason why I think we got, you know, stepped up, because, because there's also other weird rules, like, you, you have to be at the public hearing, so we know the 20 agencies that were there and who, only those 20 agencies can now get those funding. Now, maybe one person is the applicant and they have other partners, that's what we're trying to work through this week. What I don't want to have happen is we get to Friday and Homeward or the Homeward Board say, we now have additional information that says, if you don't have a partner that will provide you space or land or whatever, then your application isn't due. And locally, we need to make sure that we consume that $9 million, and only a third of it can be permanent supportive housing, which is what we've mainly done.
Yeah. I have no problem doing whatever we need to do. My question more is, i- if there's an opportunity to take a little more time, I also want to make sure we're being thorough if we have the opportunity, rather than, like, i- if we truly need to rush, let's rush. But if we don't need to rush, I, I hope we can, we can take a little bit of time so, so we have a chance to look at that.
I, I agree. I do think, my own perspective is, we have to rush and then go back and amend it as, as we have time to flush it out a little bit, between the December deadline and the January deadline.
So Homeward is asking for it to be in by Friday?
Well, and, and it's a, a scoring issue too, for the, the bigger application. So there's the rule that the local competition has to be due 30 days before the federal. That's why they have the due date that they do. It's a lot of dues in the sentence. But the, the other thing is, I think some of the newer participants I get, that they want to have a strong application locally so that they get a higher score. There is a call coming up where we're going to learn the score sheet and what's all components of that. So I can relay that to you if that's helpful. And I think that will maybe answer some questions as to how urgent some of these things are, because I haven't seen the score sheet locally to even know what's part of the competition, so.
It's my understanding too, that a lot of the rules and regulations are not even available to find out what's going on.
Yeah, the actual...
So there's a lot of, so hopefully the whole thing might get postponed. That's why they're asking for more time, because nobody has all the rules and regulations from the federal government.
And you have this 30-day requirement.
Right.
Homeward is the, is the, is the organization that allocates the federal funds. Dollars come into them and people apply, nonprofits apply to Homeward. Do we know who those applicants are? Will we always know?
So to the application process, the city of Des Moines is the collaborative applicant. We are responsible. But Homeward manages the process.
They manage it.
Yeah, and then so it goes to a grant committee. The grant committee makes a recommendation to the Board of COC, the Homeward COC Board, and then that comes to the city council. So the city council does have the ultimate say and authorization to submit the grant. And then our city staff administer like reimbursements and the contracts and all that. So we do the very technical.
Okay.
And, and this Homeward does more of the planning process-oriented type part of it, the competition part of it. As for your second question, I apologize, what the, what was your second part of that question?
Will we know who the applicants are?
Oh, the applicants are? There's the usual suspects. So there's, a lot of people have, a lot of agencies have been receiving this funding for years.
Right.
So there's going to be, of course, ANOEM, Iowa Homeless Youth Shelter, or Youth Center...
Families Forward, Primary Healthcare.
Families Forward, Primary Healthcare, HMIS, that system. And then there's going to be a handful of new ones. I think Catholic Charities is looking at applying, which they've never applied recently, the, the free app that Councilmember Coleman mentioned. So I think there's definitely a few more that are going to apply that haven't in the past. But we can get that list, I think. They did that public meeting, so I think we can get that list if you want to see it.
I think it's accurate to say that you have the full support of council to do this. We're not micromanagers. I'd rather see you focus your time on getting it done.
Right.
I'm just curious.
It was important to give everybody an update, because a lot's changing very quickly. And we wanted to show how we could possibly interchange with something we've been working on for a year and a half.
Right, right.
And how it might help us execute that.
And Chris is whispering in my ear at my question, this just became available three weeks ago.
Yeah. And it's not even fully out, like, we still don't have the application.
That's what happens with the federal government, if we can thank them.
The unique aspect is that Des Moines might partner with one of the applicants. And so I think that's one of the questions that, that will need a definitive yes from the council this week yet. And then what, as Councilman Coleman mentioned, what would our role be as that partnered to that applicant? And it's likely to be land acquisition and staff time to, to... to help put more details behind it. Some of that could happen after Friday, but we need to be at least prepared to say we would do that work.
Okay. With that, if there's no other questions, this work session is over, and we'll reconvene. We have a closed session at 4:00 PM with our regular meeting at 5:00.